Councilmember Tagliano.
I am here.
Your work.
This meeting is being held in a conference room called the P D Act, N J S A ten colon four dash two, as said. John and Richard sent to the record the Florida legislature and was posted on the municipal bulletin.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg, Deputy Mayor Conestino, Councilmember Taglia, Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Then everybody please rise with flag salute.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and consider republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start with this, I have a couple of proclamations to do, and also we will be announcing and showing the winning of our pumpkin party contest. Start out with lung cancer awareness march. It reads, whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States, accounted for more deaths than colonist breast and prostate cancer combined. And whereas radon is the leading cause of lung cancer in individuals who never smoked, and accounts for seventeen thousand to twenty-six thousand deaths in the U.S. every year with sixty to seventy percent being women. And whereas screening for lung cancer for lead to early detection can save lives, reducing mortality by twenty percent. And whereas funding for lung cancer research trials trails far behind many other cancers, an additional research is needed in early diagnosis, screening, and treatment. And whereas organizations working in Hackensack community, such as American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forums, are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening, and working to increase screening rates in Hackensack. Now therefore, I adjutant to the cross junior mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with members of the city council, hereby proclaim November as Lung Cancer Awareness March and recognize the need for research in lung cancer and encourage all residents to learn about lung cancer and early detection through screening. The next proclamation. Red is started as a Saturday. Whereas the city of Hackensack celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas there are thirty-two point five million small businesses who employ forty-six point eight percent of employees in the private sector of the United States. And whereas seventy-nine percent of U.S. consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in our community, seventy percent report that they makes them want to encourage others to shop small. And whereas Hackensack, New Jersey supports our local businesses that create jobs, restore our local economy, and preserve our communities. Now therefore, I adjutant to the cross junior mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with members of the city council, hereby proclaim Saturday, November twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small business emergence on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. Is it for proclamations? Got those pictures ready, Craig?
Yep.
So every year, we've actually, it's the second year actually we've done it, right? Second year for the pumpkin party contest. We do it for recreation. We get a lot of kids participate. So this year, we had the three winners. Our third place winner, who had a hundred and seven votes, is Maya Cobb. And there's her pumpkin on the screen, pretty artistic. All right. Our second place winner with a hundred and forty-three votes is Robert Ian Cole. That looks pretty cool. Excellent artwork. First place winner with four hundred and forty-seven votes is Francisco Jara. There he goes. So the kids had a lot of fun doing this. It gives them incentive to do it because they do get prizes. And then ask, just if you're watching on YouTube, to our three contestants, the clerk's office will be contacting you regarding your certificate and the prize within the next couple of days. So congratulations to our three winners. So I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular cal, the executive session of October very eighteen, December twenty-two. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. I. Deputy Mayor Conestino. I. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. With that, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Vinnie, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. The city will be participating in a veterans state program on November eleventh at eleven A.M. on the green. This year, the city will unveil a commemorative plaque in honor of Lee Daranio. Our health department will be hosting a free rabies shot clinic for dogs and cats. This event will be on Thursday, November third, from seven to nine at our D P W garage. The city has been awarded first place recognition with suburban engineers from the New Jersey Society of Municipal Engineers. This award is for our Clay Street Combined Store Separation Project and will be given out at the league municipalities. The city has received official notification that our tax maps have been granted approval for formal, excuse me, for formal certification and revaluation purposes. Like to thank our tax assist and the staff there for seeing this project through and finally getting this done. Main Street Traffic Safety Status Update. This is the new program on Main Street with the P D. For the month of October, they recorded two motor vehicle accidents, one involving a pedestrian. There were eight moving summonses, two hundred parking summonses, and eighteen warnings. There were zero arrests and eight ordinance violations for a total of two hundred and thirty-seven different incidents of enforcement. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. If you'd like this, ready, Deb? You're ready.
All right.
Resolution four fifty dash twenty-two.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number forty-nine dash twenty-two, an ordinance to amend and comprehensively revise Chapter sixty-three of the Code of the City of Hackensack, bicycles and sleds to be renamed bicycles, roller skates, bicycles and sleds. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for public hearing.
The motion open to the public.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public would like to speak to this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no members of the public, motion closed to the public. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Jerry?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
We resolve by the city council, the city of Hackensack, County of Birmingham, State of New Jersey, that ordinance number forty-nine dash twenty-two has passed its second and final reading and is hereby annulled.
Thank you. Resolution four fifty-one dash twenty-two.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number fifty dash twenty-two, an ordinance to amend Chapter one seventy of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic, to add a loading zone on Charles Street.
Need a motion to introduce? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
We resolve that the above ordinance being ordinance fifty dash twenty-two is introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, at eight o'clock P.M. or as soon thereafter as a matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution four fifty-two dash twenty-two.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number fifty-one dash twenty-two, an ordinance to amend Chapter thirty-three of the Code of the City of Hackensack with respect to administrative fees charged for police extra duty details.
Need a motion to introduce? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
We resolve that the above ordinance being ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-two is introduced, was now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, at eight o'clock P.M. or as soon thereafter as a matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. The resolution four fifty-three dash twenty-two.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number fifty-two dash twenty-two, an ordinance to amend Chapter one forty-eight of the Code of the City of Hackensack, streets and sidewalks, to regulate project signs placed in the public right of way.
Okay. Need a motion to introduce? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
We resolve that the above ordinance being ordinance fifty-two dash twenty-two is introduced is now passed at the first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, at eight o'clock P.M. or as soon thereafter as a matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution four fifty-four dash twenty-two.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds for state board judgments, overpayments, and duplicate payments.
Need a motion, please? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four fifty-five dash twenty-two.
This is a resolution authorizing award and contract for consulting services for four hundred Main Street redevelopment plan.
Need a motion, please? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four sixty-five dash twenty-two.
This is a resolution authorizing awarding of co-op contracts for services to provide the ability to pay parking fees via mobile telephone app to Pay by Phone Technologies Inc.
Need a motion, please? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four fifty-seven dash twenty-two.
This is a resolution authorizing the awarding of co-op contracts for services to provide the ability to pay parking fees via a mobile telephone app to Park Mobile LLC.
Need a motion, please? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four fifty-seven dash twenty-two. Four fifty-eight, sorry.
This is a resolution authorizing approval of transfer of two thousand twenty-two budget appropriations.
Need a motion, please? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Carroll. I'm sorry, Councilmember Taglia.
And both.
Mayor LaBrus.
Resolution four fifty-nine dash twenty-five.
This is a resolution declaring a local public emergency for sanitary sewer line replacement due to collapsed lines.
Need a motion, please? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution four sixty dash twenty-two.
This is a resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Need a motion to pay the bills? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Before we move forward with the consent agenda, does anybody on the council have a card plate? Seeing none. Can we move forward?
Following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. Consent agenda consists of resolutions four sixty-one dash twenty-two through four seventy-three dash twenty-two. Resolution four sixty-one dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing endorsement of proposed urban county community development grants. Resolution four sixty-two dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing recreation refunds. Resolution four sixty-three dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, fiscal year twenty-three Hudson-Raritan Estuary Urban Rain Garden Grant Program. Resolution four sixty-four dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing the mayor and council committee of the whole and regular two thousand twenty-three meeting schedule to which all dates and times are subject to change. Resolution four sixty-five dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing and requesting the planning board undertake a preliminary redevelopment investigation to determine whether the delineated area of Block three fifty-six, Lot one, otherwise known as two fifty-one railroad place, satisfies the criteria for designation as an area in need of redevelopment for non-condemnation purposes. Resolution four sixty-six dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing veteran one hundred percent tax exemption for sixty-seven Thurlow Place. Resolution four sixty-seven dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing veteran one hundred percent tax exemption for two eighty-three Elma Avenue. Resolution four sixty-eight dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing leave of absence without pay for Lee Warren Montgomery sanitation worker from October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, to November sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Resolution four sixty-nine dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing submission of the Hackensack Municipal Alliance for Prevention of Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Grant for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Resolution four seventy dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing raffilations for P T O David E. Owens Middle School in New Milford, New Jersey. Resolution four seventy-one dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing accrued time payout of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents to D P W employee Lorenza Lett. Resolution four seventy-two dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional services to the city of Hackensack for redevelopment council. And resolution four seventy-three dash twenty-two is a resolution authorizing award contract for architectural services for Johnson Park Sports Facility to H Q W. That would be a motion.
With that, I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Is it this ready? Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Then I need a motion open to the public, please.
Did you want, Vinnie, to re- say it again?
Yes, Vinnie, if you're here.
I'm here.
Can you read that statement again, please? Just for people who weren't there before.
Yes, sir. Before the grant application was filed, safer grant application, the Hackensack Fire Department was and is rated a Class One Fire Department by the Insurance Services Office, I S O, representing a superior level of fire protectionary. Lexa Paul, formerly the Rogers Group, recently completed an assessment of the fire department at our request and made numerous recommendations for consideration. Nevertheless, they noted that the fire department provides excellent and wide-ranging services to the city. The current staffing levels of the Hackensack Fire Department, which is eighteen on duty, meets and exceeds the N F A, NFPA standard of seventeen for responses to moderately-sized residential structure fires. For responses by the, for responses to fires occurring in larger complexes, multi-story structures, and other target hazards, such as our hospital, the jail complex, for example, implementation of an automatic aid agreement with adjacent career fire departments have been recommended to assure additional fire suppression resources are responding on the initial alarm. Initial responses to these types of alarms and similarly high rises, according to the NFPA, is in the twenty-seven to forty-two range of member, number of firefighters to initially respond. It's quite possible there is not a city in the state that has their own staffing levels at this number to have an initial response by their own fire department without automatic aid. While Hackensack Fire Department suppression and prevention efforts contribute significantly to the community's safety, along with enhanced fire protection requirements in the new building construction renaissance, there are no guarantees for absolute safety. The local elected officials rely on a field of professionals, reports, and expertise to make responsible determinations in acceptable levels of risk based on overall safety and the affordability for the city. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I need a motion open to the public. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Conestino. Councilmember Taglia. Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Anybody from the council or from the public would like to speak, please come forward. Give your name to the clerk. You have three minutes.
John Heinz, Hackensack Fire Officers Union President. I'm up here again. I'd like to take this time to ask you to really reconsider to say accepting safer grant, as is money, a saving on overtime. It is amazing what it would happen. Like Chief said, there won't be any overtime. The guys that are on duty, the injuries will be less because of less time to work. We don't have to work at twenty-six firefighters. We don't have to do the work of twenty-six firefighters at eighteen, with eighteen. Studies have shown that the crews, crew size is much better to have four guys, twenty-five percent faster. We get the twenty-two minutes of work done. And honestly, I'm appalled that this mayor would say that it's gratifying to see the actions that you have taken to keep our manpower there. Nothing in here says that we're able to fight a fire in high rises or these new buildings that you did. Here it says a small residential occupancy. Do you have a basement in your house? I think you do. We can't fight a fire with that, is what they're saying. Your study says, I have a copy over here. It says, including hospitals, schools, and county prisons, the fire office response capability must be enhanced with additional apparatus, personnel, and resources for the initial alarm assignment. By getting these twelve guys is a step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heinz, would you be, I'm going to ask that you give all your information, you can, to the chief, so that when he sits down, we have your concerns and information?
Sure. If, I would like, as a union president, I would like to be able to sit in this meeting with you guys.
That would be on discussion. That would be up to the chief and the city manager, I think.
Thank you.
That we can make that call. Thanks. Next person, please.
Justin Yona, President, twenty and one. It's important to know that, based on the numbers that we have, what the city manager said in his due respect in a medium-sized city, we're considered dense and urban. So the numbers for the NFPA, we are not meeting those numbers. We meet the numbers for a medium occupancy, but we're dense and urban, so we do not have those numbers. The city buildings that are going up, one fifty Main, four fifty Main, eighteen East Camden, all these buildings that you guys are championing with your pilot grants and everything else like that, that's all good. It's bringing in more money, more resources for the city, but the department has to grow. We can't respond to High Street, Aim Street. We can't respond to residential structures if we're walking down the hallways of these other buildings as well. So that's important to know. We have twenty-seven members who can go in the next three years. We have thirty-four members who go in the next five years. If those members retire and bring in the new guys with their lower salary, that's one point seven seven six million dollars of savings. So I understand that you guys are saying that you were told five, and now the government's saying we need twelve, but we also turned down seven member grant fifteen years ago, two thousand and seven. So fifteen years ago, we needed seven more guys. Now we need twelve more guys, but you're still turning down this grant. So that just shows how undermanned and how overworked our department is. Where this is of no benefit to us. Like the chief said, we're going to be losing overtime money from that. We're not worried about that. We want safer working environment and to be able to provide a good service for our city, and you guys are not allowing us to do that. So like I said, based on all that information, and like I said, it financially makes sense. You guys want to continue to build the city, that's all, you know, we understand that, but you have to allow us the best tools to provide the city, and like I said, with an I S O Class One department, you provide a lot of services to the city. It's financially responsible, and it makes sense for the commercial and industrial parts of the city as well. So we're just asking to be able to give the best tools. There's retention grants that ought to be had. So we were to take this grant to hire twelve guys. In three years, you guys can apply for retention grant for these other twelve firemen. And the way the city has grown, we're probably going to need more than these twelve guys, because like I said, based on the Rogers Group and all the other information that you guys are requesting, you guys have it all. It's all been given to you. You guys paid for it all. So we're just citing information and facts that have already been provided to you guys through the finances that you guys have taken from our department already. We have three thousand dollars left in this department for the next, till January, because you guys decided to take the money out of our fire department to pay for the study that you guys are not responsibly holding too. So we're just looking for safety for ourselves, safety for the citizens. You know, we're not looking for anything else financially based on ourselves.
Thank you. Next person to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Carolyn Davis. I'm here again tonight to stand and support us, Brandon Montgomery and Steve Savage. I believe they both should be, Steve should be returned back to the position that he had before this all started. I'm gonna mention some names. There's more. Frederick Lara, Sissy Breakwhite, Howard Gregory, Mary Ferguson, um, Ojeda Towns, Nellie K. Parker's School. There are many, many more, but there've been many African-Americans in this city, but contributed to this city. And some of their descendants are sitting here with me, some are not here. I found, Mayor, that under your leadership, that every time it seems like a black person applies for a planning board or zoning board, they turn down. Every time. Everybody does not agree with you, but we are diverse community, made of people of different nationalities, different religions, even different political views. And because we're diverse, everybody needs a seat at the table, whether they agree with you a hundred percent or not. So, that's my message for tonight, and I hope you reconsider. Having a black person on your ticket does not turn into we support the black community.
Just, I wanted just to speak about one thing. Because I served on the planning board, we're prohibited from serving on the zoning board, but the last two, uh, planning board members are both African-Americans that we just appointed within us last year, and, uh, they're doing a great job, and we enjoy the company up here and the people. So, that's misinformation if we do not put African-Americans on the planning. Next person.
Choyonani, Hackensack Fire Department. There's been a lot of talk this evening about the NFPA standards for staffing and manning, uh, and what's required, what isn't. I have the numbers here, and I wanted to clarify a few things, uh, as we get started. Uh, the city's asserting that the report completed does not indicate the need for additional staffing per the NFPA standards. However, NFPA seventeen-ten, which outlines minimum required staffing and initial responses, contradicts this assertion in the following. Section five-two-three-one-one states all engine companies should be staffed with a minimum of four members. We currently ride with three, and that is also contradictory to OSHA's IDLH, atmosphere requirements of two in and two out. Section five-two-three-one-two-one goes further to require a minimum of six members for dense urban locations. The same requirements are set forth for ladder company staffing. NFPA is clearly stating the minimum requirements above our current staffing conditions. The admittance of additional staffing as a recommendation within the Rogers Report is a glaring egregious oversight. The staffing requirements per the NFPA standards, the city is above stating to follow, are based on active members assigned to an apparatus each day. This is recommended prior to automatic aid or additional resources being called. In addition, as mentioned, the only staffing requirements the department is currently meeting under NFPA seventeen-ten is outlined in section five-two-four-one, which indicates the initial first alarm response for low hazards. NFPA defines a low hazard structure as a two-story, single-family home, two thousand square feet or less, with no basement and no exposures. If any of these parameters are changed, it is no longer considered a low hazard. This is an extremely small reflection of the structures and occupancies that make up the city. In addition, the claims that other towns in the state do not have the proper staffing on their own to meet these requirements, uh, I believe needs to be looked into further. Elizabeth Patterson, Jersey City, are just a few that are able to meet these requirements within their own city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Never kill and get a cycle sack. As parents, it is our prayer that our children will grow up to be good people and good citizens. It is also our wish that they remain in the town that raised and groomed them throughout their formative years and hopefully come back to the community and give back to it. So many of our children go away to college and don't come back because of lack of opportunities. Brandon Montgomery didn't do that. Steve Savage didn't do that. They are both here in Hackensack, working with our children the way others worked with them. Unfortunately, there are those who are holding them to much higher standards than their predecessors. They both have educational backgrounds and experience in the sports and recreational fields, unlike other department heads, namely the DPW department head, who was literally trained by the workers and allowed to learn on the job, made many mistakes. Also, we have an HR head who has no certification in HR, yet they are allowed to continue. How is this fair? How do you subject your city employees to this? We want Steve's position reinstated, and we want Brandon to be able to coach the Comets football team without being accused of stealing time. It is ludicrous.
John, I wanna follow up on your ridiculous statement about, you know, you have two African-Americans on, Americans on the board, not planning. How many African-Americans you have working in City Hall? That's the question. None? Zero? How many African-American, African-Americans you have on other, uh, like the sanitation department? How many? And I'm not talking about the workers. I'm talking about those that's in charge. None. So, management. So, what are you talking about? Because you think we're gonna be happy with you got two African-Americans on the planning board?
I didn't ask anybody to be happy. I was just correcting.
Well, it sounds like you're trying to make us happy with that foolishness. We're not happy with that, John.
Somebody made a statement at the, at the podium, saying there were no black members on the planning board. That's a correction.
So, when are you gonna be more diverse of, of the city?
Because the council, the council picks planning board members.
That's right.
Okay? The council does not pick employees. We have nothing to do with employees in the city.
Oh, you don't have nothing to do with it?
No, we don't. Absolutely not.
So, you don't have no, there's no diversity in Hackensack and, and city government? And so, you got somebody who like they, like, well, what you were saying, who not even qualified for the position of HR. But what's the problem? You couldn't find an African-American or somebody you can else, uh, recommend or look at? Or you just don't want that? Or you wanna continue in your systemic race as what?
Well, number one, that's offensive. Number two, my employer, you need to speak to the person that hires people. We don't do that.
Well, that was offensive to me, what you said.
How is that offensive?
What?
How is that offensive, what I just said?
Don't ask, don't, John.
I just say to the facts, sir.
Well, the fact was, was not satisfactory.
Finish your time, Mr. Jeff. Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanna hear what you gotta say about hiring practices.
I said my piece. I don't, I don't.
I know you said your piece. Don't make sense, though.
Next person from the public.
Hello, my name is Bridgette Hackensack. But originally from Passaic, New Jersey. Let that be known. And I'm built differently. And as I told you, John, on the last meeting, when I asked you, were you racist? After the meeting was over, you took yourself, when the cameras was off, to come down that walkway and to approach me. Let me tell you something. Don't you ever do that again. No. Make it understood. If you can't say what you need to say to me when the cameras are on, so it can be recorded and so the community can see, don't you ever approach me in that manner again.
Not a problem.
Okay? Let us be understood. That's your second tour. Okay? Just to let you know that. So, that lawyer that sits over there and gives you directions, so he can tell you, don't do that. And I'm here for Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Savage. Yes, Mr. Savage needs to be placed back in his position. He needs, those kids need him in that position, because they need people that look like them. This city now is a minority city, an urban city. Just remember that. But I'm telling you, slave Negro days are over. Over. Okay? This is a new era here, and you better start paying attention, 'cause every time I get up here, I'm gonna call you out. Racist? Yes, you are. You and that council racist.
Again, I mean.
Yes, one hundred percent. I'm talking. You're not talking. This is my time. So, let that be understood. This fire department, these police officers, they truly don't know who you are, but like I said, you keep messing with me, it's gonna be a different time for you. You're gonna be removed from this position that you think you hold, but the puppet, the puppet master that sits next to you is the one that's really in control. You just the voice piece.
Next person from the public, please.
Vice President, thirty-one, seventy-two files. Um, Mayor and Council, I appreciate you, um, telling our chief you gotta get back to the table and really reconsider this safer grant. I just want the citizens here to know that this study just showed about fires, where we respond to a whole lot of other things, especially the natural disasters that have happened, the flooding that's been going on in this town. Who's been flooded here? Anybody else been flooded here? Are we came and helped you guys out? Anybody? So, with that manpower, it would help more citizens instead of having us stay at one house for a while. We can get things done. These are motivated men. We love our jobs. Believe us, we love our jobs. Just support us. That's what we've been asking. And we do EMS. Okay? So, now we're building these parks, these domes and everything, inviting more people to our town that could possibly get hurt. Who's gonna take care of it? We used to have an ambulance corps that would race there. That's God. Remember that?
Absolutely.
That's all we're asking. Just our support, like we asked the other council that didn't support us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Hey, how are you? I'm searching eyes. My house anyone present in lights to come way out of Jersey Hall in here for twenty-twenty-one? So, first off, I'd like to thank the mayor for being on his bedside every day, some of his last days.
Louder. Can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. I'm usually loud. I'd like for you to reconsider, um, and accept the full grant, because these firefighters are my family, and they're everything my kids have. And they're tired. They work a lot of overtime, and they need to be with their families, because life is so short. Please reconsider. Tim worked a lot of overtime, and he was not home, and that's the only thing I, I would request is more time. These, these firefighters need to be with their family. Please. Please. I really do appreciate you being by Tim's side and everything you did for us. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Elhapp, one fifty-three, Ross. I'm a Hackensack resident and a wife of the Hackensack firefighter. I just can't wrap my head around why we would not approve of the safer grant for two-point-four million dollars to hire twelve firemen. We ask the fire department to be highly trained. They respond to calls, they're always drilling, they're, they take classes, they do everything they could do to be better firefighters, and if hiring twelve more guys makes the city and the residents and everybody who works in our city safer, why wouldn't we take that money? To me, it just seems like a no-brainer, and I just think that it's something that really should be reconsidered. And for, and on another note, I support Steve Savage and, uh, Brandon Montgomery. I was on the rec board for eight years, and I saw a lot of the good things they did at the recreation department, so I just wanted to support that as well. Thank you.
Next person, please.
There once was a bird who sat on the oak. The more he sat, the less he spoke. The less he spoke, the more he heard. Why can't I be like that wise old bird? My name is Anthony Davis, former city councilor of Patterson, New Jersey, and, um, I have a third degree, rec degree, and psychology degree. I am here to stand and rise and support reinstating for Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Savage. Now, I'm not familiar with Hackensack that well, although when we play you in football or basketball, I am. But I do recognize that we have leadership coming from an individual such as those men, especially Brandon Montgomery, who returned back home after going to school to give back, and that's what we look for. We want our young men and women of our cities to come back and return back and to give back, and that's what he's doing. So, um, what I was told, 'cause I was just told inform this today, I have not talked to Brandon, but I've talked to some people who work with him, know Brandon, fine gentleman, and we're asking, just for reinstatement, to get over whatever this, uh, I don't know the name for it, but whatever witch hunt is out there after him or the member, uh, let's just put it, obey and just bring it back, because our youth, if we don't treat them now, we'll be paying later.
Um, my name is Gordon Whiting, a resident of Hackensack, Hackensack High School, currently Hackensack High School Athletic Director. Here to speak about our relationship with, um, Mr. Savage and Mr. Montgomery. Currently, we have a positive relationship that has been very productive and has allowed our youth to have a positive experience with the recreation department. We are currently trying to coordinate our youth programs, our high school program, to improve the athletic ability and athletic chances of our young people, and we work very well with Steve and we work very well with Brandon. As far as Brandon is concerned, he has been a volunteer football coach for the past eight seasons, um, which means he did not receive a stipend. So, he worked for free, and if you know Coach Wimbley, who was a former coach, you know how long he practiced. So, Brandon spent a lot of time, um, with the program without any type of stipend, and he does a su, a super job inside of young people, and he's a role model. He's a college graduate, and it's just, when you see someone who grew up in your neighborhood and you see that they have a college degree and they're, they're just an excellent young man, the young boys, they need someone like that. A lot of our kids are, how can I say, single-parent homes, or they need a role model, and Brandon's an excellent, excellent role model. As far as him not being at the rec, uh, I know that once he leaves us, he turns to the rec to put his hours in, and it would be a travesty if he's not allowed to spend time with our young men at practice and the games. It's not even about the wins or losses, it's not about that. It's about how he speaks to them, how he talks to them, how he builds up their, just their mental capacity to believe in themselves. He's a, he's a believer, he's a positive young man, and it would be a shame for us to lose him in that capacity, 'cause at this time, most people don't wanna coach. It doesn't pay much, and it's a lot of hours, a lot of hours. And he is a person that, I think if we lost him, it would be, it would, it would hurt some kids, it would hurt me personally, but it would hurt some kids, 'cause he's a role model, he's an outstanding young man, and I hope that we can, uh, figure out a way to allow him to be on our coaching staff, uh, again next week. Thank you.
My name is Brian Stewart. I'm Brandon Montgomery's mother. I'm here again to speak on his character, to speak on his faith, to speak on his dedication to the city, to the recreation department, to the children of this community, and I think that you should take that into retrospect. To punish him for something he didn't do, for his love of the community, you're punishing him? I think you need to take heed, look at his character, look at how he, uh, look at how he gives back to his community, and take that into retrospect. Um, I want, I do wanna thank his fraternity brothers, who can all vouch for his character, whether the city manager or the deputy city manager, who is not here with a one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar salary, who doesn't come to these meetings. Um, let her know that also. Thank you.
Next person from the public, please.
How you doing? I'm Andrew Looney, president of the Mendel-Schmal-Chapel, Mendes South Park Corporation Incorporated. Resident. Incorporated, resident of Lodi, New Jersey, my mother-in-law lives right here in the senior of developments here in Hackensack. We just want to speak to the person of Brandon Montgomery. We can vouch for his character and integrity as a person. He is a pillar of not only the Hackensack community, but he also volunteers his time in the city of Patterson, M.S.A., with various charitable events. He's there with enthusiasm, and I think it would be a travesty if you throw this kid away, being that he's from this area, he's from this neighborhood, he gives back to the kids. That's the most important thing, his impact on the youth in this area. So as you make your decision, do it fairly, take into consideration the passion in which everyone has shown support for this young man. Let's not throw him away. Again, just ask for just fairness in this time. Thank you.
Next person, anybody else in the public? Motion to close, the public? Local?
Councilmember Von Ritter.
Wait, I got a hand raised.
I'm really nervous, but good evening. My name is Yolanda Hopkins Rogers. I'm a resident of Hackensack. I'm new to Hackensack. I've only been here 20 years. I know. It's new to the politics of the city governance, but I wanted to say this. My first interaction with the city government was when I tried to petition getting a pickleball court here in Hackensack, and my first encounter with anyone who works for the city was Steve Savage. He was very helpful, he was courteous, he answered all my questions, and we were able to get a lot of things done, and thanks to Councilwoman Ruben Bird, she's been involved in trying to get something done as well. So my first encounter was very positive with Mr. Savage. I visited the rec center, it's a beautiful place, it's run well, I met the rec board members, it was very positive. So I'm in support of keeping people who are members of this community who want to be a positive role model for our children. It's very important, I think. As a psychologist, it's important for children to see people who look like them in places of authority. So that's where I'm coming from in terms of that, and certainly if someone is a young man like Mr. Montgomery, I'm sure he's a role model for young children. I do have one question, though. I heard it said that the council has no input in terms of hiring, however, there's input in terms of placing people back in their positions. Can someone help me understand how that works? If there's no input in hiring, but if there's input in terms of returning people to their positions, it would help me if I got a better explanation of how that system works.
The council, the council does not, we do not directly deal with employees. There's a council's, matter of fact, I recommended Steve Savage for the recreation position in the first place. That was why I recognized, I wanted to, we needed somebody, I said, I know a guy, and it was Steve, and Steve got the position we've been serving him for these years. We don't, you know, we could certainly speak to the city manager, but the bottom line is the administration, not the governing body, make the decision on hiring and firing, or in this case, if we don't fire, it is a different situation, but yeah, we can have conversations, but still, the bottom line is going to be what they feel is best for the city. And that's why they agreed, they agreed with us in the past, and they disagreed with us in the past on hiring, so it goes both ways.
Okay, so the city manager and whoever else is involved with...
The HR and the city manager, and now we can sit down and position as well. Please let this woman, this woman's time. Thank you.
Well, I just like an explanation, and I'm learning more about the governance than I thought I would need to, but thank you.
Thanks. Just so you know, we covered the 1924 city managers' form of government. The municipal managers' form of government, which I believe there's only eight towns in the state of New Jersey that have this, I think it's eight or nine, they're not very common, and the main difference in that form of government is the lack of human interaction or the interaction between the governing body and the employees itself. Would you like to speak ahead, Steve, just to explain?
Well, I was gonna say, the whole reason this form of government was created back in the 1920s was actually intended to take the governing body out of personnel decisions because there was a belief, and again, you know, this is sort of the progressive era, you know, following Teddy Roosevelt and Woodrow Wilson, the concept was, hey, you know, bring in a professional manager, delegate the manager the authority to make those hirings and firings, you know, you appoint the city manager and other, you know, certain limited positions, you know, clerks, assessors, things like that, but the day-to-day governance should be taken out of the hands of the politicians and given to an appointed city manager. So that's the form of government, that's the world that you live in. There are limits to what you can do, and I think you've made that precisely clear. The city manager has to make personnel decisions based on the information available to him, which may or may not be the information that's available to the public, quite frankly, and he has to make those decisions to which he believes are in the best interest of the city. And you can come to this meeting and you can speak to those decisions, and the city manager is on this, this screen, obviously he couldn't be here today because of a health issue, and he's hearing everything that you say, but at the end of the day, he's been entrusted with the authority to make those decisions in the best interest of the city. That's what he's done in this case, and he has his reasons for it, and as I said, you have every right to criticize them, but to say to this council, well, you know, you need to overturn this, you need to change this decision, that is simply not within their legal authority to do.
Who hired the city manager?
We do.
And who is deputy city manager?
I'll fill the audience. Go ahead.
I just want to say one other thing. I want to thank the fire department, they've come to my house three or four times and saved me, so if we could finally...
Hi, I'm Lundy Coast from Flintton Place. I'm just, I just want to say about Brandon that he has a reputation throughout this city of being a very upstanding young man, and I wish that you would use your influence to see if the city manager can reconsider his position because this young man, if you talk to anybody, not just in sports, he helps people in their homes, he reaches out to the public, he is truly a community servant and really needs to be considered that way. And I also want to say, you know, it doesn't make sense not to accept this grant for 12 more firemen, because we really have to consider in this city that's growing exponentially that we need to put people's lives before money. I don't know the reason we would turn down this grant, but if it's a financial reason, I think we have to put lives before money. That's the most important thing. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, John. Good evening, council. I just have like one, two questions. One is, is the city manager appointed by the mayor or the council and serves at the pleasure of the mayor?
Yes, he is.
So if I'm your boss and I hire you, even though it says I can't do anything to you, I can always call you in and say, if you don't do this, right, you're out of here. So, you know, that's just the structure of business. If you're the boss, you're the boss, no matter, you know, how you try to slice it. That's one thing. Second thing is, I think that Brandon and his entire family, John, are an asset to this town. You know Candy very well. Brandon is an excellent reflection of his parents. Brandon has also assisted us at the, you know, we run a pantry, so during the height of COVID, we were feeding 50,000 families altogether, because they came from everywhere, and that's a credit to Hackensack, that's a credit to all the people who work together here, you know, whether it's the volunteers, whether it's the city council, whether it's everybody that makes up that effort to make this town a better town, you know, and I think Brandon as a young gentleman is one of those people who makes this town a better town.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Next person? Steve, go ahead.
Hi, John Nigl, Hackensack Fire Department. Mayor and council, I wasn't prepared to make any speeches or anything here. As you guys are aware, I am very involved in all the grants, or a good percent of the grants for the city of Hackensack. The grants that we apply for in the city of Hackensack are done to reduce the burden on the taxpayer, okay? They're not done for our own selfish needs, but they're done for every citizen of Hackensack. We work extremely hard every day for the citizens of Hackensack. We go out of our way to make sure that they're safe and healthy, and we do our best to provide safe working environments for us, for the police department, DPW, we're always on the lookout for everybody. Our grants are not just specific to the fire department, although the specific grant, the safer grant is. The overall value of the safer grant, which we're not seeing the bigger picture here, does more good than harm. Even though, you know, if you want to look at it from three years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, when you start adding other factors in, it really is a good deal. It would be a shame for the city of Hackensack to actually deny this grant. I think that the repercussions politically in the state with our, you know, other senators and with our congressmen, it might be a detriment to future grants that we get, you know? I can let you know that no matter what decision you make, I'll continue to work my best and give you my whole heart for the city of Hackensack in doing recoveries, you know, day in and day out, but I really am asking you to reconsider denying this grant and to look at it in an honest manner. It's good for the city of Hackensack, it's good for the fire department, and it's good for everybody that comes and visits us, especially with the growing city. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. You are now in the public? Motion to close?
Over.
Local?
Councilmember Von Ritter, Deputy Mayor Costina, Councilmember Bataglia, Councilmember Carroll. Mayor, sorry.
Good evening. Thanks for being here. As a resident, mother, educator, and volunteer, safety is always my number one priority, especially in schools. I have personally advocated for better traffic control at the schools due to safety concerns. I've advocated for safety, Jessica Buhl, Remy Anzak, and Ellie Kate Parker, which is an open concept school. I have also advocated for the inclusion of students in our schools when I first came on board as council member. During these discussions, the first thing I ask is how does it affect the safety of our residents, especially our youth? I continue to ask those questions at all discussions that I'm part of. As a council, we rely on advice from professionals and experts in the field. The less that we want to do is sacrifice safety. I think the most important point to stress is communication. Throughout the night, I put different rationales and explanations and depth data from what I understood to be true. Ensuring that we have open communication, we're on the same page is the most important takeaway from this meeting tonight. We have to work together as a team to be part of the solution, not the problem. Although we cannot get involved in personnel, I can say that my interactions with Mr. Savage and Brandon are positive. Months back, I sent an email regarding Brandon's contributions to rec and how he's always on the desk of court...
He delivered that?
With the kids.
What is she talking about?
How he was always on the desk of court with the kids, and I sent an email saying how he was out there and working together with them. He ran the football program, and my boys enjoyed him at the football camps. And yes, we are excited to move forward with what grant people want for our residents, especially our seniors, and making sure it's available during the winter months at the M.M. Center. I think it's important to make sure that our, that our residents, especially our seniors, are able to participate in sports during the day. So we're working on getting some things set up at the M.M. Center for them, in addition to outside courts and the parks. Thank you, have a good night.
Good evening, and it's nice to see a roomful of people here tonight, and not that all of you will come back, but the more the barrier, and the interactions and hearing the voices of men that you hear is important for everyone that sits here on this side of the stage. The word in the room tonight, you know, about the safer grant, this council is faced with making a lot of difficult decisions, and I believe that we approach that decision-making with, I'm going to steal some Ted Aaronberg's favorite words, facts before ads. I think this council acted extremely responsible in evaluating all of the safety over this piece we have here, by having professionals committee give us suggestions as a council and outside view of what we needed to do in our police department. From a safety perspective, we did something similarly in the fire department. Again, it's another educated view and acquisition of data that we collected to help us make our decisions. Of course it's hard, you know, it's hard. My husband's a retired police captain, who should maybe know. So I live that life of a husband in service that, you know, frequently was out all night on calls, whatever it may be. So I do have some empathy for the families in this as well. But we still have that responsibility as a council to look at everything, to look at what comprises the best decision for the city, not just financially, but in every way. And I believe we do that. We had a meeting on January 25th, I remember first we pulled the minutes from the meeting with our fire chief, who asked, because it is the council that approves admitting for these grants and accepting these grants, if we could consider adding to the staff at this time. And the council agreed that we would do so by increasing the staff by 5%, by going from 100 to adding five additional firefighters. We did the math, we looked at the numbers, we looked at the implications when those three years are over, it was still going to have an impact, there was going to be a bit of a struggle, but we were willing to do that, to get ourselves the momentum that needed to happen, I believe. And other decisions may continue to happen as far as staffing goes, but it was an attempt, I believe, in good faith to start that process. How that from 5 to 12, any of you that know me, I'm not about the blame game, because that's not who I am. I don't care how it happened, I don't care who said it or who did anything. All I care about is fixing it and getting us back on the right track. I think as a committee as a whole, we agree that we would have a meeting of the minds and sit down and try and think about this and talk about it constructively. We need to make a final decision, I believe, Mr. Nigl, that you said it was the 21st of this month, so we have to act quickly. The council has asked through the city manager if the fire department could reach out to these grant votes and see, could we change that number 12 to a 5 and still get the five men here and start at that point? I'm still hoping that we can accomplish that, and I look forward to hearing back from our city manager, from our fire chief, Mr. Nigl, who does a lot of these negotiations, and hoping that this is the way we can proceed. And I just want the feeling and for to convey this message to the fine men that are here and the total respect that we have to this fire department and have always had, and have always spoken with such pride when we talk about it, and the men here and women here that function in that, on that we have for us here in the city. We all know we go beyond, that's not even a question, but we have to look at the entire picture and the implications of everything. That's why we... That's why we're here. So I look forward to that meeting, hoping we can resolve this and bring these five men on and see how we do, and see the impacts of it, and see if we need a couple of more, let's take it slow, let's progress and let's move forward. So I look forward to hopefully coming to a resolution of that. A couple of things that have gone on here tonight. I think small businesses Saturday is very big, especially in the city of Hackensack. After coming to COVID, supporting our small businesses here in town is critical for their survival. We should be supporting them all year long, I'm just on Small Business Saturday. And I believe, I don't know if the city manager mentioned it, but we're looking to, you know, Christmas holiday time, once again on Bean Street and Anderson Street, you know, I put the heads over the meters so people don't have to pay a park to frequent the stores in our downtown and our Anderson Street shops. So let's always look first to small businesses. I know it's fun to go to the mall sometimes, but these businesses certainly rely on our business. A couple of other things, something else that the city manager referred to, which I think is very good news for the city, is this is the second year in a row that the city of Hackensack receives the first place award in engineering that's going to be presented at the Leagues in the world. Again, big strides in engineering, lots of infrastructure work that's been happening. And it's nice for the city of Hackensack to achieve that type of recognition. Just a couple of things on here that I usually talk about. One was, we're doing a redevelopment investigation for a project we talked about before. This is the one at 250 Unreal Place that's going to be an affordable project that we're moving forward with that direction. And another kind of cool thing I think on tonight was that we're moving forward with having mobile apps for our parking meters. You know, today's world is what everyone wants to do, so I think it's a good step in the right direction and just making life easier for those that do free ride down the streets. As most of you know, I'm not the recreation person. I hate to say it, I've never received a trophy in my life because I'm just not good at sports, but it doesn't mean I can't appreciate it and all the good work, you know, especially Stephanie and Jerry that they've put in. So unfortunately, I can't speak personally to either of the young men, or both young men, I'm sorry, to either of the men that we talked about here tonight. But I'm sure everyone's listening, and I'm sure the city manager is listening. And let's hope we can come to some kind of resolution and move forward with good explanation. Thank you again all for coming, and I don't think we have another meeting before Thanksgiving, anyone?
One special, special meeting.
All right, so we'll see you again before Thanksgiving, so I wish you a happy Turkey Day, but have a nice evening.
Now? Okay. So we're looking forward to have a meeting with the fire department and also they consult the situation between the city manager and you guys. I support the fire department, you know, I am a resident of the city of Hackensack for over 45 years. And I recognize that we are a good department. The same thing go for the police. Related to the situation in the recreation department, I was the person that recommended Steve for the job. I know Steve for over 30 years, working with the kids and the city, and I know Brandon too. And I think they are doing a damn good job. But the city manager who made the decisions. I hope so we have a happy resolution related to this problem. Thank you guys for coming.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thank everybody for coming, take care, and God bless.
Thank you, Gary. Any veterans in the room? Raise your hand if you're a veteran, if you're sitting, stand up. So Veterans Day is 10 days from today, guys, all right? I want to thank all you guys that have been involved. And, sir, we appreciate that. Veterans Day is the 11th, November 11th, and 11th is odd. This year is a special day in Hackensack. We always have the Veterans Day, so it's down on the green. I know I see a lot of you guys there. This year we're honoring, Lee Donvino, who was a true World War hero. He's got a lot of accommodations and medals committed to list. He served as a medic in the military, so you can imagine what that was like. He's a true war hero, purple horn. We're honoring him with a plaque, not just for his heroism as a World War hero, but also for what he did in Hackensack. He started baseball in Hackensack along with others. So I ask that any of you, anybody in the room, if you're free on the 11th to come down and, you know, let's honor this guy, what he deserves from Hackensack. As far as Brandon goes, I don't know whether you're aware or not, a lot of us don't even know, you know, I don't, when you keep saying reinstated Brandon, does anybody on this council know that he was taken out of the job or the position? So this is the first time we're hearing it, Brandon's been taken out of a position. So that shows you when we're talking about the former government that disconnect because we don't know it. So I need to know, and if one of you want to stop and talk to me about it afterwards, I'd appreciate it. Has he been taken out of his position, is it something else? My guess is, I'm thinking because I coached for years, and I know it was an issue with him coaching, maybe they did it. Well, there we see first some coaches in Hackensack from Patterson and his fraternity brothers. But I'd like to know, just for my own personal information, so I know how to go about dealing with it. So if you'd be so kind as to tell me, actually, can you come?
He's told that he no longer coach football next year.
No, they told him not to coach in that year.
On his own time, free time.
They said he can't coach on his free time?
They said he cannot coach next year.
All right, can you say for, just two minutes, please, I appreciate it, thanks. With that, just, you know, it hasn't been that long of a night, but it's, you know, everybody's a little tense in here. I'm glad we're going to the table with the safer brand issue and people we can hash out, looking forward to that. I want to thank our police director, Mr. Leggett, for coming tonight and explaining about the new situation with Jumanak and how we're going about approaching it. He's actually did a great job on you, I appreciate it. And everybody have a safe trip home, see you a few weeks. Thank you, open room. Motion to close the meeting.
Councilmember Von Reumberg. Deputy Mayor Castreina. Councilmember Pataglio. Councilmember Carroll.